Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 2nd, 2018 meeting of the Whitehall City Council. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we will, I'm going to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge.
(Crosstalk). 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 Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
(Crosstalk).
Here.
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 President.
Next on our agenda, we have the approval of minutes for September 18th, Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 18th minutes.
Second. A motion by Ms. Connison and a second by Mr. Tanner for approval of the September 18th Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, the minutes stand approved for September 18th. It's not on the Agenda, but at this point, I'm going to call on representatives from the Langport community for a special presentation this evening.
Many years. We used to play ball together, didn't we?
Oh, really?
Yeah. You Gary?
Yeah.
You had a twin.
Yeah, I had a little one last year.
Does he?
Still has a twin.
(Crosstalk).
Good for him.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like, on behalf of Langport Homeowners Association, as well as the HOA, we would like to present these two plaques, thanking you guys for your assistance when we were in need. The community was going downhill pretty fast, and we had a lot of displaced indigents that were shackled up at the pond, and without your assistance, I know we were in debt due to the fact, due to the HOA falling out. Due to your support, our community is now growing, and we would like to present this first plaque. It's been presented to City of Langport. Thank you for the support of Langport Homeowners Association, the guidance and generosity have allowed our community to grow. So, we really appreciate it. We have just installed two fountains inside the pond, an aeration system, electrical stand. Thank you so much for your assistance. I called seven times to make certain, we was at one deadline, so it was a tough one, but the city was so kind in making that, making the fountains and the installation of the electrical system work and improve, and so we thank you, we thank you. The second plaque is for Mike Bibbins, and I'll take this out of plastic. The second plaque is for Mike Bibbins. I've worked with you closely, and I'd like to say, thank you for your leadership, your guidance, because without your guidance, we would not be here today. Today, I think we would be still deciding what we are going to do with the debt that we had. And it reads, the plaque reads, "Mike Bibbins, City Attorney, thank you for your tireless support of the Langport Homeowners Association. Without your effort, our community could not make lasting improvements. Stay the course, simplify Dallas." So, we definitely appreciate your leadership. And thank you guys once again for having us here and allowing us to say thank you and show our gratitude and appreciation for making those improvements. So, thank you so much.
(Crosstalk).
We appreciate the recognition, and it's nice to see that the Langport Home Association is once again flourishing and accomplishing something. So, good luck in the future. It's hard to keep a homeowners association going, so you got a lot of, you know, tough work ahead of you, but I believe you're going to get it done.
And Mr. President, members of council, let me, let me just state for the record, Mr. Thomas and this board and all of the members of this community, you get all the credit for what you did. I just did a small part, just to come in to do what I did, but what you have done at that location, cleaning it up, getting it right, doing what was the right thing for your community, is a beautiful thing. You're exactly why Whitehall is the city of opportunity. You took the opportunity, you did something with it. It's beautiful, and I look forward to, one day you guys invite me over there so maybe we can do some fishing. Is it possible to get a picture taken?
Yeah.
Which, which direction?
Facing east.
Okay.
It's going to make the picture easier that way.
Yeah, that's true.
(Crosstalk).
Yeah, face, face the camera.
Would you like both of these? (Crosstalk).
Grab the plaque, please. You're the only other pond before we get the pond in the park.
(Crosstalk).
Thank you. And, sir, members of council.
Good change. Still alive. I don't play ball anymore. I'm lucky to walk. (Crosstalk). Okay, all right.
Were you wondering why you're chatting?
All right, we'll move on with our Agenda. It's our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you'll have up to three minutes.
That's gas money.
All right, we'll move on with our Standing Committee Reports. We'll begin with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thinking, Mr. President, Administration and Financial Management did meet last Tuesday. We discussed the number of ordinances and a couple of resolutions which will be introduced tonight. Our minutes are on file, and we will meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you, sir. Community and Elder Advocacy, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met. The minutes are on file. There's no pending legislation. Committee will meet again next Tuesday at 6:30 in the back. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. I do believe we have something on the agenda this evening, and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you, sir. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development has no pending legislation for tonight. We met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. I do believe we have something on the agenda this evening, and we'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you, sir. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development has no pending legislation for tonight. We met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back.
All right, thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Heck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday. There is no pending legislation. We will meet this coming Tuesday sometime after 6:30 in the back.
All right, thank you. Public Safety, Chairperson Connison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back next week sometime after 6:30.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have no pending legislation. What you have in front of you when everybody sat down is the concept plan for the Whitehall Dog Park. We did it tonight. Just a little brief history on that. It's kind of unique. In the last half century, I think it's 46 years ago was the last time that the city purchased land to develop a public park. And it's really a cool thing here, so we'll meet again next week in the back. Well, thank you much.
Thank you. Those are all of our Standing Committee Reports. We'll move on with our officials' reports. We'll begin with our Mayor, Ms. Kimnack.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to say kudos to Langport. You know, they really worked hard these past couple of years, and that just goes to show that, you know, when a community works hard and they have a passion for their community, they can make things better, and I want to say thank you, Attorney Bibbins, for helping them in that process. I think that's very important. They got the kind of advice and counsel they needed, and thank you so much for supporting their efforts. I can't wait to see the fountains, and I will be driving by them and looking at them very, very soon. Also, I would like favorable consideration of Ordinance Number 95 and also Resolution 39. Resolution 39 is asking that we send information to our elected state leaders and asking them to give back local government funds that have been taken for many, many years now. There is $147 million surplus from taking of local government funds, and we are asking the next elected governor to return those funds to every community that it has been taken from. So, that's what that Resolution 39 is all about. And also, I want to say, if any of you were able to come to the announcement from, at 5:30 on the corner of Washburn and Beechwood, it was the announcement of a new park in Whitehall, a dog park. We've had lots of suggestions for residents over the years that they would like one, and we have been working on this since 2016. We were, did acquire one of those lots in 2016, and then just recently, recently, we learned from the Franklin County Land Bank that we had the opportunity for the other lot as well. So, we were advised or told that we would be getting that lot. This is a 2.3 acre plot of land, and we're very much looking forward to this. We're going to be inviting neighbors and also citizens from around Whitehall to help us in the design, and asking what their thoughts are on the matter and how that they would like their dog park to be designed. I think it was very telling that we had very many people there today, even with the threat of rain, and it did rain. They brought their animals, and they're very excited over this, and we are too. So, I just want to say, thank you, council, for your support, and also, I just want to thank the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have our City Attorney, Mr. Michael Bibbins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Thank you, Mayor, for your, for your words with respect to Langport. That was completely shocked by that. I was not expecting that tonight. I will officially report from the City Attorney's Office. In the month of September, the mayor's court, we prosecuted 308 cases in our mayor's court. Out of those 308 cases, 28 of those were of a criminal nature, committed by Whitehall residents. So, that's 9%. That's a downward trend, which is very positive. So, once again, those numbers are showing your neighbors and the people that we are living around, we live in a safe community. That being said, remember this month is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, hence the purple ribbons, and thank you for wearing a purple ribbon, council member. Anyone else with one that I don't see? But, yeah, there you go. Wearing purple, wow, hands have been went all out in purple shirt, purple everything. So, I appreciate that, but, Rob, remember this month is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. On the 13th, the City Attorney's Office is sponsoring a swap meet where if you have any individual, any, any items that you would like to give towards any person that is in need, we are going to put those items out in City Hall underneath the awning. We'll have tables there from organizations like Choices and other organizations that are domestic violence incentivized organizations. I even asked my wife if Franklin County Job and Family Services wants to have a table. I don't know if she's going to do it, but I think I've got some influence there. So, maybe they will be there too. But, that being said, this is the push for the month of October. I wanted to give council, as well as members of the public, just an understanding of the domestic violence cases in the city of Whitehall, and this number is by design. When I came on, when I came on board in 2015, we had prosecuted 181 domestic violence cases, and when you think about the prosecution of those cases, there's a number of factors involved. Willingness of the individual to, to come forward, their comfort level with domestic violence advocate, whether or not they, they feel like their case is going to, going to get some type of redress in, in the system. And so, I really worked with my team, and, and they really got on board with the vision, and since then, we have experienced a 38% increase in the amount of cases that we have successfully prosecuted in the City Attorney's Office, because year-to-date, we've prosecuted 291 cases of domestic violence in 2018. Just think, in 2017, it was only 284. So, we're trending up, letting the public know that the City Attorney's Office, we're here to help. We're here to provide resources. We're here to get you into a positive pathway so that, and I'm speaking this to the public because I understand that we are on Facebook Live, you have, you have help from the City Attorney's Office, and you have help from this administration and the prosecutors. So, if you feel, or if you're in a situation where you just want to get out and you want the help, you can contact our office, you can contact our police department, and we will find the best path for you to get into a healthy life, into a healthy pathway for your life. So, I just wanted to state that publicly. Next, as you can see, if you can drive over to the McDonald's area and the Kroger area, roses is, is cooking. So, I, I hope that you all are happy with that. I drove there last night, and they had it all taped off, which was just beautiful. And then, lastly, off, I guess this is still City Attorney business, the legal Rams are back into the competition. We just got our, our packet. They are doing a Fourth Amendment case with respect to search and seizure and drone flying above a property. So, it's going to be pretty cool. And then, last, but certainly not least, I saw my son here, so this just reminded me, Michael Justin Bibbins was selected to the homecoming court for Whitehall in his senior year.
Congratulations.
So, just pray for, pray for us. It's a new day.
Never doubt.
And, we take all the prayers we can get. I guess the parade is tomorrow, so we look forward to seeing you all out there. He will be, he will be in his full homecoming court regalia, so we look forward to this game on Friday, and that's it from the City Attorney's Office.
Next, we have our City Auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming. I would like to ask for favorable consideration on Ordinances 84, 93, and 94, also Resolution 40. I have no official report tonight other than what you had before you. Oh, I, one more thing. We did get the, the auditor has, has returned the audit to us and it has been approved with no, no corrections. We'll be finding out later where we stand with that. It'll be up online probably tomorrow, so feel free to take a look at that. It's 221 pages of riveting reading. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have our Director of Development, Public Safety, or Public Service, Mr. Zach Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
All right, thank you. Next, in line would be our Treasurer, Mr. Steve Funtzel.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I have no official report tonight, however, for any of you that were unable to attend the Fish Friday, the FFW last Friday night, they had asked Bill Hewitt, the athletic director for the high school, to come, and they were going to present him with a check, which they did, but the FFW was being visited by the National Commander, the FFW, and the Ohio State Commander also, so they were involved in presenting the check. My understanding is that they were visiting Whitehall's post because they wanted to visit a post that was doing something for the community. So, kudos to the Whitehall post, and it was nice to have some visitors of that caliber here.
Well, thank you, sir. The following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting. We had the Treasurer's Investment Report for August 2018, the Treasurer's Activity by Fund Report for August 2018, and the Treasurer's Fund Reconciliation Report for 2018. Those, those are, that's all we've received, that are communications, petitions, and claims. We have received no items since the publishing of the Agenda this evening. Next, we have our Verification of Copies. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll, on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the Agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Hannah.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right, we'll begin our ordinances and resolutions for the evening. First up, we have third reading ordinances. We do have one. It is Ordinance 84-2018, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $50,573.50 from unappropriated monies in the capital improvement project fund to the capital improvement account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 84-2018 and move to adopt.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and adoption of Ordinance 84-2018. Ms. Frymark, questions or comments?
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Hannah.
Yes.
Heck. Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 94-2018. It's amending the zoning, zoning map attached to Chapter 1122 of the 1970 codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended. Amending the plan, apartment district development plan on property located at 540 South Hamilton Road, parcel number 090001623, property owned by Hamilton Crossings Homes LLC. That ordinance is being read by title only. It is scheduled to go before the planning commission on the 4th, which is Thursday, and we will have a public hearing regarding this ordinance on the 16th of October. Next up, we have Ordinance 91-2018. It's an ordinance vacating a portion of the East West Alley, north of Main Street and west of Lambie Lane in the Blower Edition, directly behind 3948 through 3972 East Main Street. That ordinance is also being read by title only, and it is the last item of legislation we have under second reading. Under first readings, we have Ordinance 93-2018, approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $15,000 for unappropriated monies in the law enforcement trust fund to the law enforcement trust account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 93-2018, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Connison for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 93-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Hannah.
Yes.
Heck. Yes. The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 93-2018.
Thinking, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Connison for adoption of Ordinance 93-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Hannah.
Yes.
Heck. Yes.
Ordinance 93-2018 has been adopted. Our next ordinance is 94-2018. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of $30,000 from unappropriated monies in the law enforcement trust fund to the law enforcement trust set aside account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 94-2018, move for suspension of rules.
Second. A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 94-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Hannah.
Yes.
Heck. Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 94-2018.
Thinking, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of Ordinance 94-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Hannah.
Yes.
Heck. Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 94-2018. Next up, we have Ordinance 90-2018, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation of $18,000 from unencumbered.
95, not 90.
What did I say?
90.
My bad. 90 would have been before this.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 95-2018, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation of unencumbered monies in the community. Wait a minute, did I give the dollar amount?
You did not.
Okay. Oh, my gosh. I'm having problems with this particular.
Take three.
Yeah. All right. Take three. Ordinance 95-2018, authorizing and approving a supplemental appropriation of $18,000 from unencumbered monies in the community development trust fund to the home reinvestment expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 95-2018, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Elmore for introduction and suspension of all rules on Ordinance 95-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Hannah.
Yes.
Heck. Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Ordinance 95-2018.
Thinking, Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Elmore for adoption of Ordinance 95-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston. Yes. Hannah.
Yes.
Heck. Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution 39-2018, a resolution strongly urging the Ohio Governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to invest the state budget surplus in municipalities and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce the resolution 39-2018, move for suspension of rules.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution 39-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on resolution 39-2018.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Morrison for adoption of resolution 39-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution 39-2018 has been adopted. Next up, we have resolution 40-2018, resolving to approve then and now certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution 40-2018, move for suspension of rules.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Heck for introduction and suspension of all rules on resolution 40-2018. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on resolution 40-2018.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Ms. Heck for adoption of resolution 40-2018. Ms. Frymark, please call the roll.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution 40-2018 has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we have before us this evening. That brings us to our second opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you will have up to three minutes. All right, seeing no one, we will move to community... Oh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Lee Stenew, proud new homeowner for 4139 Virginia Circle East. Thank you. I wish I was coming back to this room for better, whatever it's today. I'm kind of disappointed in the administration, not in council, in administration. I heard at work that we are putting a dog park at Lambie Lane. None of the residents around us have heard from that, and I have heard from other council members that they have not heard from the administration of this. That is a blatant disregard for the way that this government works. Mayor should be disappointed in himself, using these tactics to work for issue 37. Shame.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time?
I would like to remind everyone that we started working on this two years ago in 2016. We had comments from our first actually survey that we did in 2016 with residents saying that they wanted a dog park. So, that's when we started looking at an opportunity in which we could actually put in a dog park. So, that's when we started working on it. We got the land, our first parcel on that 2.3 acre property, in 2016. We were just informed not too long ago by the Franklin County Land Bank that we had the opportunity to actually receive the other parcel, which we did ask for. So, we have no control over the timing when we receive things from the Franklin County Land Bank. And why not? Why not have an opportunity to let our citizens know about the great opportunities that we do in Whitehall? There's no reason to hide the good things that this council and this administration do for our citizens. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at poll public? All right, we'll move on to community day board.
Tomorrow's the homecoming parade. Everybody was talking. I believe 6 o'clock, because Wes is...
That's correct. Edna Road, the yearling, to the high school, the bonfires after.
There we go. And then, of course, the homecoming game will be this Friday at 7 o'clock. Come cheer on your Rams. That Vivins, guys, you're doing a good job. We need to cheer him on. We've got the, October 27th, we've got everything.
Yeah, we did.
I should just leave it there.
It is everything.
It is everything.
Yeah.
It is employment for seniors, and the morning is having their 5K walk run, little monster dash. It's a lot of fun if you've not been to that before. That's over at John Bishop Park. I believe there's a health and wellness fair also going on that day from 10 to 2. That is...
That's at the high school.
That's at the high school.
And it's from the Community Health Action Team, Whitehall Community Health Action Team. And I, you know, I'm very proud of that as well, and we definitely have a lot of good things going on in Whitehall, and we want to promote every good thing. Thank you.
Absolutely. And during that time, if that's not enough, you've got your Halloween, WCCA's Halloween Walk at 1 o'clock over at Edna Road Elementary School. And right after that will be WCCA's announcement of the Male and Female Citizen of the Year. So, and that'll also be at Edna Road, so hope to see everybody there.
One more thing?
Yeah, you forgot the evening festivities.
Oh, the evening festivities. Dan, I'll let you do that one.
Okay, there's a casino night at the DFW that starts at 6 o'clock. Buy-in is $25. You gamble with your good chips, and at the end of the, at the end of the term, so to speak, the end of the gaming, I think it's the end of the, and returning your chips for rapid tickets. And the top prize is a three-day, two-night stay at Las Vegas, including airfare for one. So, if you want to take somebody else, but you have to pay for the airfare from them, and then that's...
I'll do that.
So, and the second prize is two, and John, John is not here anymore. He would have been happy to hear this. The second, second best prize is two centerized tickets for the Blue Jackets, just down below the corporate box.
I don't know anybody that likes those Blue Jackets, huh, Kevin?
I was looking right at him, because Kevin wasn't there, though. I mean, the other, I mean, Kevin was there, but John Fetter was, and John's a big Blue Jacket fan.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a great way to help the alumni association.
It is.
Yeah, the reason for the whole thing is we, the Whitehall Yerling Alumni Association tries to give $2,000 scholarships to Whitehall Yerling Grant, and that's our purpose. Thank you.
By the way, we are still accepting nominations through this weekend for Male and Female Citizen of the Year, so those can even be dropped off here, and they'll put them in my mailbox, I believe, or they can be sent in. We've got all the information on the WCCA Facebook page.
Who else has something for community day board?
On 10-6, Get Out and Play. The Parks and Rec is doing Get Out and Play outdoor at the ballfields at John Bishop from 10 to 11. On 10-13 is the Rocket with the Fire Chief for ages 8 through 12, Whitehall Community Park, 10 to 12, and then a safer Whitehall on 10-18. And that'll be at 6:00 p.m.
Is he in October?
Yes.
You know, and I have one other, I've heard a rumor that there's going to be one night towards the end of the month when there will be a lot of little kids and stuff running around through neighborhoods.
I've heard that, too.
And they will be knocking on doors, and I believe they're going to be looking for candy or something like that. No pennies or apples.
Some sugar.
They don't do that stuff anymore.
Some sugar.
Some sugar.
There's also, if you've noticed on the park, the little land that we had that used to be the radio, ham radio place, we turned that into a beautiful landscape flower garden, and we actually have a structure up now where we can place events, posters for community events, kind of like what a neighboring city has. And so, we're looking forward to getting started on that, and we hope that the first event that we place on there will be WCCA's Halloween Walk. So, just notice that when you go by. It looks great.
Who else has something for community day board this evening? All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is poll council. We'll begin with Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vivins, we'd like to thank you, congratulate you for all of your hard work that you've done on Langport over there, and it really advances the community and shows the good community spirit, the efforts that everybody's putting in. I'd like to thank everyone for coming and have a good week.
All right, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank you all for coming, and Michael, you are a special person, and this community is blessed to have you, serving in the capacity we do. I don't know, it seems like every meeting, there's something I learn about you that I respect and admire, and you're great for this community, and I think folks are starting to hear about it and recognize that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a good thing to see neighborhoods showing good community with each other, and that's what community means, is the way that neighborhood's behaving over there. And there's other examples throughout Whitehall in different neighborhoods, whether it's block watches, or just block parties, or neighbors getting together and sharing information and looking out for each other. That's growing, and it's exciting. As far as the dog park, I believe the first I heard about it was last Tuesday, and I will admit I'm warming up to it. There are some positive things right now, immediately, and that is the improvement of that corner. It looks better. I've had a little bit of time to talk to neighbors, and now we're starting to see some design and concept drawings and get an understanding of what might be possible on that property to answer all the questions, which involves all the elements of doing a proper dog park. And the administration is doing a good job in researching that and will involve the I think it's 50/50 on whether folks in the neighborhood are warming up to it or not, but as we're hearing more information, it's helping, and now we're starting to get input from neighbors who have heard about it, and they call, and, well, are they going to do this? Are they going to do that? So, that's the stage that it's in, and I think it will grow and be responsible and be monitored, and as folks are educated in how to use a facility like this, it will only get better. But we won't know until we try it, and so I'm keeping an open mind and hope that I can be part of the process, whether that's by connecting the administration or the people planning it with the neighbors, not necessarily myself, but I think it's a, you know, it's a venture worth trying. It doesn't hurt to try in this case. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rodriguez. Well, how do you follow that up? Good to see everyone this evening, Lee, I see you out here again. And that's really all I have to say. Oh, actually, the Langport, that was a very nice presentation. You know, I've been waiting so many years to say this, you put the unity in community. Thank you. That's funny. It's worked, though. Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for everybody that came out. Langport, I've been over there, they are, they are a great community. I was looking forward to them to do great things, and they continue to raise the bar. And so, thank you for all that you do, not just for what you did to get Langport moving forward, but the way that you consistently give data and facts regarding what's happening in Whitehall as far as making Whitehall safer is wonderful. And no better person to deserve a within award than you, Attorney Vivins. I think that you are a stand-up guy, and your work speaks for you. And so, we are blessed to have you here in Whitehall, and you have a wonderful family, so it just all goes together. Again, yes, this is October, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I wore purple, okay? Purple pants, too. So, and also, I wanted to recognize Massey Pizza of Whitehall, who got the Small Business Spotlight Award because they've been here for 70 years. And so, I think that is wonderful and just a testament to companies continuing to want to stay and do business in Whitehall. I've been over to the Kroger, and when I first turned in and didn't have to dodge potholes, I said, wow, we finally got done! So, I was just very pleased, and that was another issue that we pushed, and we got some resolution through that. So, I am, again, once again, glad and thankful. I also want to make sure that people are registered to vote. The deadline is October the 9th, and I will continue to hammer that. You can go to myohiovote.com and vote. Make sure your family and your friends are registered. And I'd just like to say a couple things about the dog park, or even the discussion of the dog park. I think that's happened, a discussion of dog parks, to my recollection, was occurring when we were making improvements to the different parks. And at that time, it was, you know, we're going to consider where dog park, where the proper place to put a dog park. So, citizens have been talking about a dog park. Apparently, there are people that want the dog park. I think the appropriate way to handle it is to, you know, the citizens will respond, but to utilize or to try and shame somebody and use it to connect with another issue, I think it's, I, I, I think that's in bad taste. I think that we're better than that. And I'm just probably one of those council people that are going to speak up and speak my heart. We don't have to behave like that. I think this is a forum to poll. I think it's a forum to address our concerns and the issues that we have, but I think it's also a forum where we need to be respectful, and that's in everything that we say and we do. And I respect everybody that, that even gets the courage to get up and stand up here and to even address council, because that in and of itself is courageous to some degree, because you don't know what to expect. But to then use that as a standing or a forum to shame people, I don't think that that's the purpose, and I think that we're better than that as citizens of Whitehall, and that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Coniston.
Hi, everybody. I feel like I need to lighten the subject a little bit. Well, my Sophie is excited about the dog park. I can tell you this. I've put a video on my Facebook page a couple times of Sophie at the dog park, who doesn't really know she's a dog, but we're working on it, so, you know, a little nudging here and there. Lee, congratulations. Heard you were a homeowner. You mentioned tonight. That's wonderful. Nice to see young people doing well and wanting to take ownership in Whitehall. Mike, the one thing that, that I noticed tonight is you were so shocked by that, and that says so much. Your statistics, your numbers are fantastic, but your heart and your kindness, that's really what, what I see in, in the citizen see as well. So, thank you for all that you do. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and we'll see you again this time.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tanner.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for coming in, your comments. Congratulations on the homeowners as well. The dog park, it's a good thing. It's going to be a nice thing. We've had positive input. We have discussed this since 2016. The Parks have discussed it, the Commission has discussed it, the administration has, and I've been included in those contacts and those meetings. So, we'll see where it goes. We've asked the public to contact us, give us their input, and I wanted to thank the Parks and the director and the administration and the mayor for going forward with this. I think it's a very good idea. Mr. Vivins, congratulations. You're, you're one hell of a man. I sit with you basketball, football, here in the meetings. You started giving us statistics when you took over city attorney, and I greatly appreciate that. You told us today our 28 criminal, criminal charges by Whitehall residents, 9%. That's phenomenal. And, you know, we record these, we report these. There's a lot of suburbs that do not do this. A lot of cities don't, don't report everything, so their numbers are very misleading, very misleading. Congratulations on home court. I know Jason, I'm going to send him a message. I was hoping he'd stay a little bit. He's a, he's a good man. I've spoken with him a couple times over at the restaurant, and we've had some good conversation. So, congratulations on your son playing ball. I was honest, I watched him quite a bit. He played a really good ballgame, and it doesn't surprise him. He's got great parenting, very good parenting, so, so make sure and give him that extra $5